... meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, May 23rd, 2024. This is our legislative meeting, and we always start these meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join me in a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Please stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation by thy God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And I ask that those of us that are sitting on the dais introduce ourselves. Kristi Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Sumrall-Dumas, Commissioner.
I'm Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Felido County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you. First order of business, I need to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Reese. She is undergoing some oral surgery, from my understanding, so we will excuse her and wish her well.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumrall-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. The next motion will be the approval of the minutes of the previous session.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumrall-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. So I have one comment card, but my understanding is that this comment is related to an MSD public hearing, right? So I'm going to hold it until we get to that. Thank you for your patience. We'll move into the comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Sumrall-Dumas?
I'm first.
Sorry, I caught you off-guard, didn't I?
That's okay. Thank you so much. Just a few comments for this past week. Weekly White House briefing that I, on the webinar every Thursday, once again was involved with that. Nothing really dramatic. They're doing a lot of things in the White House, but nothing really worth reporting out at this time. The Metro update, I had a Metro update with the CEO for Metro, Darryl Haley, and there are some exciting things going on in transportation for the Forest Park, Pleasant and Run area with Metro now. You'll be hearing more about it, and it's just, just an exciting time, and I just really want to thank them for the levy that was passed, Issue 7. And if anyone is using that money through the levy that was supported by a residence, they are doing a fantastic job, so. And then there was a Marion and Donald Spencer Spirit of America Awards, and my staff attended in recognition of that great civil rights couple. So I want to speak just a little bit about the Hamilton County Small Business Day, which was on Monday. And I said on Tuesday that it was fantastic. It was great. Every positive word you could think of. But I wrote a little bit, you know, sometimes I write a little, and I said, "The Small Business Day on Monday was awesome. It was a positive atmosphere. I stayed the entire day and talked to many small business owners. I saw those with dreams that had been deferred. What happens to a dream deferred?" Immediately, I thought about Langston Hughes, who wrote about a dream deferred. Does it dry up like a raisin in the sun, or fester like a sore and then run? Does it stink like rotten meat, or crust and sugar over like a syrupy sweet? Maybe it just sags like a heavy load, or does it explode?" And I saw lots of owners who had so much hope, so much relief and excitement that we were trying to help them to foster their dreams that they had maybe put on the shelf. Those that thought that their business would fall and fail, and when they put it up on the shelf and simply let their dreams fade away. Some that thought, "If only I could make my building more attractive." Where the county introduced a facade improvement grant. Some that said, "I just want to own my own place. I'm tired of renting." And we introduced a mortgage assistance grant. It's time for fulfillment for those small businesses. It's time to manifest. You have to declare that it will happen, and I believe that it will happen for all those businesses. There were almost 1,200 businesses there, and so I'm just so excited about our board and what we're doing to help small businesses, and that will end my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. I too was going to mention Small Business Day. I did not say anything on Tuesday because I wanted to save it till today. So, and congratulations to Commissioner Reese for having the idea to do the Small Business Day to begin with, and then with the support of the board, we launched that. And Greg Forte and Pat Longo, internally Kelly and Bridget and so many others, Holly, were a critical part of making sure that not only were the small businesses there and they knew that they were invited to participate, but also the partners were there. And so we had the city of Cincinnati, we had the state of Ohio, we had, obviously, the county services there, really trying to make sure that it was well worth their time to come down and spend time at Sharonville Convention Center to do whatever, you know, we need to do to help launch some of those small businesses. So I too was very excited to be part of it and was thrilled to see so many small businesses in attendance. I also wanted to talk quickly about the governor's visit. Governor Dewine was here the other day. It was Tourism Day in Ohio, and he chose to come down to Finley Market. So it was, it was a beautiful day. He was shopping the entire time he was here. He got a lot of sausages and baked goods, and he had a good time. Lydia Maholic was here, too. She is the Director of Development, so she also came down from Columbus. So grateful that they chose to come to Finley Market and highlight one of the real gems in Hamilton County. I was thrilled to join for that. And then I also went to the Marion Spencer Award, which is thrown by Cincinnati. It's the Spirit of America Award. It's one of my favorite events of the year because it's so meaningful, and you, you're reminded of the history of Marion and Donald Spencer and all the civil rights work they did here in Hamilton County, and really the impacts, the positive impacts that we still are living with today. So I was really excited that Susan Noonan, as always, extended the invitation to the commissioners to attend. And then lastly, I just want to announce that the application for membership to the Commission on Women and Girls is open. It's open for 30 days. It opened a few days ago, so if there are any women and girls, these are teenage girls, high school girls, would like to participate on the commission for this coming year, please go onto the county's website and apply. We welcome all applicants and are thrilled to be going into, I don't know what year, maybe fifth or sixth year? Six, sixth year of the Commission on Women and Girls. So Mary Mountie, thank you for the reminder to make the announcement about the application period. All right, with that...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, just an awesome segue that you had as towards the Small Business Day, and the vendors and partners and the volunteers. I completely forgot that, and I thank you for bringing that up.
It was a group effort.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Administrator Ludo, we've got a public hearing, but I think we have time for your comments.
We conserve the trial.
Yeah, that's right.
So just one quick comment, and then several by-leave commissioners. You already hit on Small Business Day, so I won't repeat that. Did want to thank Kelly Adamson for all of her work on that, as both you commissioners had mentioned. Also, just wanted to highlight, know the board the other day had recognized Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and yesterday, our Human Resources Office, through Josh Jones, had pulled together a panel of employees that are within that Asian American Pacific Islander community group, and it was just a fascinating panel, and I just wanted to thank those on the panel who took their time to impart their collective experience to their fellow county employees. John Nelson, Jackie Cunningham, Ying Zhang, Ali Kodadad, and Gaja Kariala, and of course, Josh Jones, for all of his efforts pulling that together. It was a fantastic program and really helpful in terms of helping other employees understand the experiences of folks who come from a culture and a community maybe different from there. So it was, it was a great time, so I just wanted to pass that along to the board. I do have several by-leave items for you today. There's seven on your agenda. I think, as you said, Commissioner, I think we can get through these fairly rapidly. Item number one, on your, by-leave number one on your agenda, is a resolution authorizing the award of RFP 119-23 and the execution of an agreement between the board and Revise LLC for website hosting, monitoring, and other professional services as we take action to redevelop our website, keep it consistent with modern times, and pull more groups and departments into it. We're looking forward to getting this, this moving. Probably have something complete by, I would say, sometime early next year. The total of the contract is $289,100. I will indicate that Revise is a small business and an MBE as well, so we are, this is consistent with the board's policy on equity and inclusion from a procurement perspective as well. So the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner?
No questions.
I have no questions. I must say, though, I am looking forward to this. I think it's a pretty exciting thing, the one we're going to talk about, a website being more accessible to everybody in the county. So I'm glad we're moving forward with this. So I'll move that we approve a by-leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumrall-Dumas?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By-leave number two is a resolution accepting the recommendation of the fact-finder in the Surr case, 2023 MED 080652. This is the Surr case, collective bargaining case regarding the enforcement officers and court services officers in the sheriff's office. The board has been previously briefed on this. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions, Commissioner?
I just have a comment. I think it's indicative of our ability to follow the Fair Labor Act and that we want everyone to get their fair share, and that's why we moved toward fact-finder, and everybody was able to agree. So sheriffs are so important to us in this county, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move that we approve a by-leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumrall-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By-leaves number three and four go together, so if the commission would indulge me, I'll take them one at a time, but they are very much related to each other. Just take a few seconds on each of these. By-leave number three is a resolution, and I should say, just to kick it off, that these are two items that are really long in the making as it relates to the board's and the county's continued role in the downtown convention district and the downtown convention district projects. We're really excited to bring these forward to the board today. Resolution, by-leave three is the resolution transferring the property that was acquired by the port as a result of the Millennium Hotel acquisition to the county, as was contemplated back in the project development agreement between the county, the city, and 3CDC. So the county, at this point, will own all of the parcels formerly owned by the port, and there's really two main parcels that are bisected by the right-of-way associated with the convention way, the old city convention way parcel. It also includes some parcels north of Sixth Street, which there are some leasehold interests in. We'll be putting together a strategy for the payment of those lease costs over the time of the, of the project and a final strategy for that on the board, or for the board. But in the end, the county is going to be the primary owner of this site, which was acquired to serve as an asset for the Duke Energy Convention Center and its operations. So we're happy to bring this forward to the board today. Commissioners, if you would indulge me, go right into by-leave number four because it is related. So this item approves the lease associated with these, with these parcels to the city of Cincinnati as the manager of the property for the benefit of the convention district. So as we've acquired this property, we're going through with the renovation of the convention center. The, the vision has been for that property to serve as external resource, external space, outside space for conventions. More and more conventions are, as they come into town, are looking for and needing that outdoor space to complement and complete their program. We were talking, we were meeting with Visit Cincy and Julie Cowbert the other day, who talked about some huge conventions that are coming to town that want, want the ability to use that outside space. So as the board has acquired that site, and the vision of the board has been to leverage it for the use of the convention center and make sure that we have an attractive outdoor element to continue to attract conventions and more conventions to, to the city and into the urban core. I will say that the city, as a part of the lease that's before the board today, the city will appoint a management agency to operate the site. All of the expenses associated with this site are going to be borne by the city, its manager, and the convention center, so the county will be responsible for none of the expenses. The revenues associated with the site will go into that site to be used for the maintenance and improvement of the site. So it'll be kind of a self-contained enterprise operation, if you will. Again, the city responsible for all planned capital expenditures, revenues, expenditures, et cetera, and they will report out to us annually on all of those things, even down to the planned program, programming for the year and the programming of the prior year. The city will report out annually to the county on that. The lease does include a purchase option of $1 if the property, as was part of, part of the initial vision pre-COVID, of the potential expansion of the convention center. If we are to expand the convention center across Elm, the lease does include a purchase option whereby the city could acquire the site for, for that particular purpose of expanding the convention center. So Commissioners, that is a brief description of by-leave number three and four. I know you've been previously briefed on these, but I did feel it was important today because of the, the significant nature of this to the, to the board and the county's role in the convention district project, that I just had a little bit more about it. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but the administration does recommend approval of by-leaves three and four.
Commissioner, any comments or questions?
Just a couple of comments. I reviewed and researched both of these items. As you were saying, Jeff, we've talked a lot about it, and I'm just proud that the county is constantly looking at the best use and benefit for the county, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm super excited about this. You know, the city and the county have been working for a long time trying to organize how we work together to expand and make better the experience for conventioneers when they come to Hamilton County, and so that is the retrofit of the center itself, and it is also this element, which is the outside space right across the street to the east of the convention center that will give us the ability to program that space, whether it is sessions for someone that's coming in for a convention, or maybe it's extracurricular activities after sessions are over. But, you know, conventioneers are always looking to convene with one another, and this gives us the perfect opportunity to do that. So I'm super excited about moving forward with this, glad that it is on our agenda today. So I'm going to move that we approve item, by-leave items three and four.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumrall-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I will, I think the next three items will go very quickly, but I do just want to state that, as you had indicated, Commissioner Treehouse, I do, did want to just briefly recognize the partnership between the county, the city of Cincinnati, Visit Cincy, 3CDC, and the port, and all of these players who have gotten together to help make this project work. I think we've been working as partners with all of these groups, which I would expect the taxpayers would, would want us to do, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Let's see. Item by-leave five is a resolution authorizing the employment of special counsel to provide legal services to the board and a county employee. The administration recommends approval of by-leave five.
No comments.
I'm going to move that we approve of by-leave five.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumrall-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By-leave number six is a budget adjustment number 20 for Paycor Stadium capital repairs is in the amount of $7.5 million. Want to state very clearly that back in December, the board had approved a, a resolution authorizing a project at Paycor Stadium up to $39 million. At the time, we only appropriated a little bit over 30. Just, we were just trying to get the project moving, so this appropriates the rest of that project. There's no surprise here. There's no additional dollars. It just appropriates the full amount of the project so that we can get some of the other projects within that broader $39 million program moving. At the time, back in December, we only appropriated part of it. Just wanting to see how the projects came in. If they came in significantly under, we didn't want to appropriate that much, but this just completes the appropriation. I think we're still going to come in under, but this just appropriates the full amount so that we can keep projects moving and get funds encumbered, et cetera, but nothing different than the board had seen back in December.
Any questions or comments?
Just a comment. I know we had a big, a large assessment of Paycor Stadium, and it says, "We have good bones. We just need to do some repairs," and that's what the purpose of by-leave six is.
For me, the most important part is it is within our budget. We already decided upon this amount, so this is just the allocation of those dollars. So going to move that we approve of by-leave number six.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumrall-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And finally, by-leave seven, this is a resolution designating the convention facilities authority expenses from the transient occupancy tax, $30,000 annually. This is really a cleanup item. Last year, the board had designated the appropriation of occupancy taxes to, residual occupancy taxes to the Black Music Walk of Fame and to Visit Cincy as those residual dollars come in. There is one item of expense that, under the Ohio Revised Code, we cannot take from the general fund, and that is the operational expenses of the CFA itself. There are a small amount of expenses that we have to pay annually from, from transient occupancy taxes. That is things related to the audit of the CFA as a, as a public body, directors and officers' insurance. We're actually expecting it to be less than $30,000, given that their role has been significantly modified from, from the prior CFA, but nonetheless, we just wanted to make it, as we make these payments, just wanted to ensure that the administration is authorized to make these payments out of the occupancy tax, as it's not allowed from the general fund. And the administration recommends approval of by-leave seven.
Commissioner?
No comments.
I'm going to move that we approve of by-leave number seven.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumrall-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I went slightly over, but...
You did, but you're so, we're going to let that slide. All right, we're going to move into our public hearings. We're going to take these as they appear on the agenda. So the first one is the public hearing for establishment of the Fields-Eardle Road intersection improvements at McCully and Conray roads. We've got Todd Long from the engineer's office with us, and we do have a card related to this. Who is the person with the card? Would you, we're going to have him speak first. Is that all right with you, and then you can comment to that? Okay, thank you.
Perfect. That's a great setup. Thank you, Commissioner. So I'll kick it off. Got a presentation. I think Kristi's going to be bringing that up for us. Today, we're here for, to consider, for the board to consider the establishment of Fields-Eardle Road for the intersection improvement from McCully and Conray. This is a collaboration between Hamilton County, Butler County, city of Sharonville, and Sycamore Township. If the, can you go to the next slide for me? I've got it. Perfect. So for reference, the project limits for this particular project, it's approximately 2,100 mill feet, or about a, or tenths of a mile in the east-west direction across the, the slide here for Fields-Eardle, encompassing at the western position, the McCully intersection, and the eastern position, the Conray intersection. As you'll see from the slide, we're making certain improvements, including sidewalks, turn lanes, pedestrian crossings, and improved traffic flows. Ultimately, we've got the bisector across the center of Fields-Eardle, which roughly shows the difference, the property to the south is Hamilton County and Sycamore Township, property in the north is Butler County and city of Sharonville. That's the, more or less the county line is where we are in our particular project. So we're, we're putting a number of different features into this project. If you go to the, I've got it, that's right. Next slide. I think what I'd like to do with the board's indulgence is have the public provide any comments they have to that, that will effectively allow us to be able to try and encompass some of their comments and concerns into the rest of the presentation, if that'd be okay?
Sure. So we'll move to public comments. I have one comment card, and by the way, I should have said this at the top. If anybody has any public comment for any of the public hearing items or anything at all, really, fill out a comment card, and we're happy to hear from you as you come forward. Why don't you go ahead and come forward. It's Cynthia Ferris.
Yes.
Come on up. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. Thank you for being here.
Yes, my question is, I'm going to be the main property that's going to be affected. I live at the 7107. It looks like you're taking over two-thirds of my front yard, turning right onto Conray. So I do have a few questions. Is that going to affect my property tax? I have a critically ill husband. What ambulance be able to get ended up at my house? I'm not against this, but concerned.
Thank you. Let's have Todd come back up and answer your questions. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. If it, if it please the board, I'd like to continue through the slide, and then I'll absolutely address the questions that are addressed, or I can do it in the opposite order, whatever you prefer.
You do it in the opposite order.
Okay. Not a problem at all. Not a problem. So the property that I believe Mrs. Ferris owns, is it the corner here, if I'm correct?
Is that correct?
Is that correct?
That's the corner lot.
I believe it's the, the corner lot on the, the south way. Okay. Yes. So the particular project has a modification being shown, and what we can do with...
He's got, the pointer is over from this one, and you can't see it from that direction, so, right? So we're going to go to this.
Yes. So the, the improvement is showing a circulatory roundabout across the property that cuts across the, the corner of the property here. The, the improvement is not intended to make modifications to the existing driveway itself other than the, it slightly shortens it in the north-south direction. The property currently has a turnaround for the driveway. That's not going to be modified in this particular project. It's quite all right. So one of the other things that we can, we can do to help this particular property and her better understand exactly what's going on on her property, we're prepared at, in room 710, right after this, this hearing, to go ahead and show the specific drawings for the project, to be able to show exactly what we're anticipating on that particular property, along with any other property owners that are, that are in the, in the audience today as well. This particular plat doesn't necessarily show exactly the specific concerns, because it's a much wider, broader brush feature, if that helps.
Yeah, I was just wondering, Todd, do you have any specific numbers as far as her property? What will be eliminated, taken away, if any? Do you have anything specific?
I don't have the square footage off the top of my head. We can certainly look at that in the office and determine what that might be. The, the concept for our, for our overall project is to try and be as minimally invasive as we, as we have to be to be able to get the intersection improvement to be in place, but that's something that we certainly need to talk about.
Okay, yeah, so I think one-on-one conversation is in order so that there's a better understanding of the concern here, and then what, the information that you have, but that is not on the screen. So is that okay with you? So in, in what room did you say afterwards?
It's in room 710.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll be happy to facilitate.
Okay. And my, and my staff would be happy to take you there as well, so, okay. So do you mean you'll be up there after this public hearing concludes?
Correct.
Not after the meeting concludes, mind you, because that's going to go a little longer. So we're going to get you out of here sooner than that. So, okay, so carry on, Todd.
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. So let's just discuss real quick what the establishment hearing is intended to provide. So the establishment hearing itself is part of a public roadway process for improvements that involve widenings. The first step is for the county to be able to acquire the necessary easements to accomplish the roadway improvement. This actually allows the county to determine, the public hearing itself allows the county to determine whether the project is required and what it'll do to better serve the public at large. In the way of background, I'd like to show that we've, we've had several open public forums for the particular, we had two open houses for this particular project, one on May 11th, 2019, the following on February 23rd of 2020. This is where we use this forum to receive public input regarding the design from each of the adjacent property owners. There were approximately 100 participants in each of those meetings, so we didn't necessarily go in there with a specific design in mind. We wanted to make sure we were trying to accomplish what was correct for the needs of that particular area while listening to the, to the property owners as well. So let's talk a little bit about why the improvements are needed. So currently, the roadway is carrying more traffic than it was intended to, and the congestion is a problem during peak travel times at, at the rush hours in the, in the morning and the afternoon. The proposed, excuse me, improvements will adjust the roadway widths to support the connectivity and travel times, and make this section of road safer for those who travel through this busy area in the Hamilton County. This proposed Fields-Eardle improvement project will widen Fields-Eardle Road between McCully and Conray roads. Additional turn lanes will be added to the three-leg McCully Road intersection, and a roundabout will be constructed at Conray. Additionally, curb and gutter and storm sewer improvements will be made, along with the sidewalk being built along certain sections of the project. a sidewalk being built along certain sections of the project. The actual travel, travel counts, the current average daily traffic for Fields Erdel Road is about 13,000 vehicles daily. On McCully, it's about 7,500 vehicles daily, and on Conray, it's about 2,000 vehicles daily. So this is considered to be a collector road through kind of the functional classification of, of transportation being interstates, arterials, collectors, and local roads. So it, the congestion itself is the primary driver for moving forward with this particular Let's talk a little bit about the overall project costs. The current cost estimate's approximately $7 million. What I'd like to be able to point out in this particular slide is that we've got right-of-way costs, utility costs, construction costs. We also have been able to obtain through Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council, funding at the federal level, that, that you can see on the slide. Too many things up here to play with. On the left side here, you can see that the funding allocations for each of the breakdowns are about $260,000 right-of-way, utilities about $560,000, construction $4.6 million of federal funding, which totals approximately 80% of the total cost of the project. What I'd like to really highlight for this particular project is that the Hamilton County and Sharonville, we're looking to advance additional costs through the Ohio Public Works Commission. So we will be seeking additional work for utilities and construction, about 20% of the overall project costs, in the, in the hope that we will be successful in obtaining additional grant monies to be able to fund this project, reducing the overall costs to Hamilton County as well. So we think that's an important element of this particular project as well. Some of the specifics for this particular project, we have 26, 26 properties that we're going to be requiring easements, and we have two different types of easements, we work with these types of projects, temporary easements, 26, and permanent easements, which we're going to, for this project are standard highway easements, there's 12 of those on this particular project. Let's talk a little bit about what a temporary easement is. So temporary easement is an area of property that's only needed during construction of the improvements. It is, it is by nature not, not permanent. It's typically used for the regrading of your front yard or driveway, and it allows for the overall adjustments in these areas to meet the widened roadway. If there's a profile elevation change, it allows us to smooth that grade out. By definition, the expiration of it is temporary, it'll cease to exist upon the completion of the construction work itself. It's also worth noting that any area of temporary construction that's done in the easement for, for land disturbances will be restored as part of the project. For example, if your front yard is affected, it will be reseeded and strawed as part of the project. Let's talk a little bit about what a permanent easement is. So a permanent easement is an area of property that's needed continuously after the completion of the construction of the project. So a permanent easement is for a specific purpose or a feature of construction, it might be the right widening width, it might be some storm feature that is on part of the project, and it's used only for that roadway purpose. The permanent easement allows for the construction of the feature, as well as the future maintenance, repair, rehabilitation, and replacement by the county. So there's not a specific burden to the homeowner of the features constructed in the actual easement itself. The property owner does retain the title to the property that's covered by this easement, so it's not, it's not something that is owned by the county when we're, when we're finished with the project, it's owned by the property owner. So I'll ask if there's any specific questions of the board at this time.
I have a couple of questions, but Commissioner, do you have anything?
I just had one question, Todd, as I look at the, I think it's the first page, the public forums that you had, you had two of them, over 100 people attended, but that was over four years ago. So what attempt do we, as the county, what do we do to remind people this is possibly getting ready to happen, we're having public hearings, is that, and also, is that normal that we have an open house four years before we implement a project?
It's a very good question. Part of what, because we were able to seek federal funding and had some success in that arena, that extended the duration from when we initially gave the inception of the project itself, 2019, 2020. So it took us a little while to be able to obtain the, the funding for that. So that, that helps give you a little bit of guidance as to why the, why the project length. We have been reaching out to the, to the community across the way. We recognize that sometimes property owners change, you know, in that, in that aspect, so we're trying to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, this particular public hearing, other forums that we have, to be able to get information out to the, to the community in terms of written dialogue can be, or written form can be sent to them as well.
Okay. And I also wanted to compliment the engineering office for how you leverage money for the county, and how we tried to reach our arms out to get, as you were saying earlier, funding so the county doesn't have to pay all of it, so, appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I also was interested in the public comment part of this. So the community, the communities are on board, did you say you're working in partnership with the communities?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, if you, if you would indulge me, is I'd like to introduce Todd Gadberry, he's our deputy engineer, and he's been the product manager for this particular project, was at both of those open houses, I think he might have a little bit better background to the questions that you're asking.
Okay. Hello?
Hello, thank you. Yeah, we have, we've worked with Sharonville at, at length, also in Sycamore Township. They were invited to the meeting today to give their input also. We have worked with them quite a bit, and they're all on board.
Okay, and, and another thing I was curious about, it's, it sounds like you had a lot of public comment during those hearings.
Yes.
What kinds of things were you hearing?
The majority of the people were on board for the project. They know that the congestion has been extremely difficult in that area, they know that an improvement needs to be made, they like the concept of a roundabout since the flow of traffic continues. The signalized intersection in McCully is maintained as a signalized intersection because of the limits in, in area that we have there. We would like to have put a roundabout, but there's just not enough room. But 95% of the people were happy with that, there were some people that were concerned about additional right-of-way needs and how that would affect their property.
Okay.
Yep.
Obviously, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, when you, we talked about how this is being funded, I too applaud the engineer for finding, especially the federal funding, to help out with 80% of this project, that's a lot. So remind us where the other 21% comes from.
Okay, so we applied for OKI funding and got about 80%. In September, we will be applying for Ohio Public Works Commission to match the OKI money, and that's where the other 20% will come in.
And if.
If we get it.
If you don't get it, where does it come from?
It will come out of the engineer's budget and the City of Sharonville. So hopefully, we get it.
Okay, that, yeah, fingers crossed.
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions, so tell us what our next, sure.
Question, Todd, maybe you're aware, the, I think if I saw on the, on the schematic, there, the, the roundabout is at Conray and Fields Erdel, correct? Which I believe just to the north of that, on the north side of Fields Erdel is a, is a fire station.
Yes.
Can you talk just a little bit about the implication? I know we're doing more and more roundabouts in this community, so the community is broadly gaining experience with them, but are there any implications to the entrance of, of emergency vehicles onto a roundabout that wouldn't be associated with just directly entering onto a normal roadway?
That's a great question. We have worked with the fire department, and we are actually, they're, they pull their trucks in, let's just say, on the west side through their, their garage, we're going to have to switch that rotation of how their trucks come in because of the roundabout. So we've put in additional parking, additional road that will allow that movement. So, we've worked at length with them, we've got a, there's quite a bit of work to do, actually, at, at the fire department.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, is our next step, I know we have to close the hearing, but then what's the next step after that?
If you choose to close the hearing today, our next step would be to continue to, to visit with each of the, the homeowners who have concerns, and then you'll be seeing in the following meeting, subsequent additional resolutions to allow us to start to be able to reach out to the property owners, to talk specifically about the easements that we're looking to acquire.
Okay, so we only need one public hearing for this?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, that, was that your question?
That was my question, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, do you not want to, given that, so if, if we were to not close the public hearing, given some of the comments that are coming in from the residents, would that, would an appropriate step be to take a, I don't know?
Keep the public hearing open.
Open until we hear back from the engineer?
And then close it, and then bring the resolution.
You're most comfortable with that. All right, so, so I am going to then move that we keep the hearing open, have the engineer come back and report back after we hear about some of the resident concerns within the next, the next couple of weeks, and then we will close the hearing after that time.
Sounds good, especially when it was brought up about the fire department, and you have to make, I heard him say, some adjustments, and I'd like to know more about that. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and then we'll gather up in the lobby and then go up. Thank you, appreciate that. All right. The next two public hearings are related to MSD. The first one is a public hearing for the Locust Street and Much More Road Local Sewer Project. I have a card related to this one, correct? All right, so we are going to do that one first, and then we'll, we'll move into the second one, which is related to the wet weather improvement program. So with that, let's move into public hearing number two. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Lauren DiGhercia with MSD. I believe we have a presentation all set, great. And today I have with me Director Christie, as well as Ryan Welsh, Deputy Director and Chief Engineer, as well as Jacob Rungy, the project manager for this project. So as you said, this is the public hearing on the Locust Street and Much More Road Local Sewer Project. As background, this project is located in Columbia Township on Locust Street, Much More Road, and Walton Creek Road. The project was initiated by a petition for public sewer service. It will provide service to 37 parcels total, which consist of 32 condos, four single-family properties, as well as a community theater. This project will facilitate elimination of five household sewage treatment systems, as well as the private wastewater treatment plant that currently serves the condominium complex. The package plant is really the impetus for this project, it has some past violations, and this project will provide a long-term solution. There are also five HSTSs that don't comply with current Hamilton County Public Health regulations, this will also provide a long-term solution for those. The initial polling indicated support from 28 of the owners, so 76%, with only two opposing, and no response from seven of the owners, which were counted as, as no for purposes of polling. The board authorized and funded design of this project in April of 2019. MSD proposes to construct approximately 1,150 feet of eight-inch gravity sewer with five laterals. The condos already have laterals, will essentially be rerouting their private sewers to the newly constructed MSD sewer, and it will connect to the existing MSD sewer further down on Walton Creek Road. And we anticipate construction will take place between December of 2024 and May of The left portion of this slide shows the configuration of the proposed sewer extending up Walton Creek Road and Much More and Locust. The top right shows the benefited parcels, all outlined in blue, that would be assessed for this project. And the bottom right just shows the project location on the east side of Hamilton County, in Columbia Township, just south of Indian Hill. In terms of status, MSD has finished the design, and all necessary easements have been acquired at this point, and we have spent approximately $52,000 to date. The total estimated project cost is $1,480,440. We anticipate 70% of those costs will be remaining and funded by MSD after each of the 37 benefited parcels are assessed, $12,000 each. Just as a reminder, the assessed amount is strictly for the public sewer that would be constructed by MSD, any private side costs, such as plumbing, or HSTS abandonment, are the responsibility of the property owner. And additionally, we always like to remind people that the interest and fees may apply if the assessed amount is paid through the property taxes over 20 years. And I'll talk a little bit about that later, more. So this is the tentative assessment, which shows all the parcels that are benefited, and the calculation of the assessed amount, which I'll talk about a little bit more. It's really a lot of information, all to say that each of these properties will be assessed, the $12,000 amount. To explain how that's calculated, we take the total known project cost after construction is complete, divided by the number of benefited properties, then we subtract MSD's primary credit, which is $10,700 currently, then we subtract the secondary credit, which is essentially any amount necessary to reduce the amount to the $12,000 cap. After that, we also subtract any HSTS credit that is applicable, in this case, no properties on this project qualify, but after that, that is how we come to our net per parcel assessment, which is nearly always $12,000. Final assessment takes place in May or June after the project is constructed. We actually have our final assessments for this year on the agenda today for other projects that have recently been completed. The owners would be invoiced for the assessed amount, and can make a full or partial payment over a 30-day period, and any balance remaining will be placed on the property taxes and can be paid over 20 years in 40 semi-annual payments, again, subject to interest and Our next steps after this public hearing, in terms of the legislative process, are a five-day waiting period for written comments or objections, legislation to address any objections received, and for the board to consider whether to proceed with construction. If the board moves forward with that, a 10-day waiting period for any appeals will take place, and lastly, the appropriation of construction funding. So we anticipate that that would all take place over the summer, and we are anticipating construction would begin in December of this year, and conclude in May of next year, and if all goes to plan, final assessment would take place May or June of the following year in 2026. So that's all I have in terms of a presentation, I know we have some speakers on this, so turn it over, or can take any questions.
Appreciate that, yes, so we've got one speaker's card, it's Nancy Lawson, please come forward, you've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, I'm Nancy Lawson, and I live at 7496, Much More Close, one of the affected properties, and I'm Board Chair of the Walton Creek Homeowners Association. And with me are three other board members, Linda Larson, Nancy DeSanto, and Steve Halpern. And we're all here to advise you that our homeowners are in favor of this project, very in favor of this project.
I was worried that you were going to say the opposite, so thank you.
And we decided, we decided in the interest of time that I would, I would address the board on behalf of all of us. We all, I also brought two letters, one from the prior board chair, and one from a homeowner saying they're in favor of the project. This was initially filed as a homeowner's application, February 2019, but the initial discussions with MSD were in February 2005, it's been going on a long time. And our, our homeowners know what's going on, we've had several MSD representatives come out and talk to us at the homeowners meeting, so people are, people know what's going on. Everybody got the letter in, in May. So we are ready for our sewers to be connected to MSD, sooner the better. So, but basically, that's what we have to say, we're here, we wanted, we wanted to make sure that you knew we're still in favor of it.
You're my most favorite public commenter ever, so, thank you for coming, and thank you for representing the group, we appreciate you all coming.
No issues here.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move to questions of the Commissioners, Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Thank you so much, and I'm glad that you're in favor also. I just had a quick question about, you indicated about the HSTS credit, can you just clarify what that is? And no one.
Sure, and actually, I believe Felicia Irwin is here today from Hamilton County Public Health, they actually make the determination as to whether or not a property qualifies, but essentially, if you have a property that we are proposing to benefit with a sewer, and they have a currently compliant system, you know, have paid, have paid to install that, to maintain it, it acknowledges that by providing them an additional credit.
Would you know one qualify for you?
That's correct.
And I just had a question about the map, I think it was the third page. I think it was the third page. Just wanted to make sure that I heard you correctly. Please. In the lower bottom with the blue, I think you said the sewer system was already established. I want to make sure that's not in addition to what's at the top. Does that include that project at the bottom? I think it's like the third page, Christie, or four. Yeah. The blue at the bottom, that's all part of the project. I thought you said the bottom blue was already established. It already has a sewer system?
So it has a private sewer system. The existing sewers, and I'm looking at the top right graphic, the existing sewers are shown in green. There is a blue, that's actually Walton Creek, if that's what you're referring to as blue. So all the green is the existing sewer. The bottom left of that graphic is the existing MSD sewer. Whereas the disconnected portion, the rest of that green, is all private. So we will be intercepting a portion of that, but some of it will be decommissioned by the condo association.
That was my question, thank you, I appreciate it. That's all I had.
Thank you. I just have one question. I did note the timing of this, that the initial, it sounds like it was even further back than 2019. I'm just wondering why it took so long? And just describe that process for us, because it does seem like it took a really long time to get this one going.
Sure, so I may have asked Jacob to come up and talk through sort of the design phase, but I will say there was a fair amount of right-of-way acquisitions that were needed, and that always takes a while to negotiate with property owners that are going to be affected by the project. But Jacob, you want to step up, and he can tell you a little bit more about the design, design phase activities?
Sure, good afternoon, everybody. This is my first.
You weren't even born during that time. Go ahead.
I won't say what grade I was in.
That's right.
No. After the public polling process, we did get into the design phase pretty quickly. I was not the project manager at the time, but it was right when COVID started. And that posed a little bit of a delay, but Lauren was right. The largest delay thus far has been in the right of way, and that's just negotiating with homeowners and making sure everybody's taken care of.
Well, there you go, short and sweet, thank you. And it's helpful that you're here, that we have some sense of the community's support. So with that, I am going to move that we close this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
All right, please explain to us then the next steps that are going to happen for the benefit of the public.
Sure, so as I said, there will be a five-day waiting period in which any of the affected property owners can file written comments or objections. That is required under Ohio law. But after that, we will bring any of those comments or objections received for the board to address. And then we will present a resolution for the board to proceed with construction. And that's when you would make the determination.
Our next step is a resolution that will come before us for approval. Okay, great, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming, really appreciate it. All right, we're going to move into our third public hearing for Phase Two Wet Weather Improvement Plan proposal. Holly Christman is here. This is the big one, right? This is, this is a big deal, Holly. So please lead us through the presentation so that we in the public better understand what's in front of us.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here today to present to you the county's proposed Phase II B Wet Weather Improvement Plan. And before I begin, I would like to thank the team that is behind this plan. I cannot take any credit for this. We have with us today the MSD team, Diana Christie, Executive Director, Ryan Welsh, Deputy Director and Chief Engineer, Neil Frank. Am I missing anyone from the MSD team here? Okay. And from the county team, we have Joe Graff, Karen Ball, Tony Osterlin, and Dave Edelstein. This has been a hard-working group to get us to this point today. And of course, they will help me answer any specific questions you may have when it comes to the plan or the projects being described. So just as background, for those watching, the Board of County Commissioners and the City of Cincinnati are subject to a Clean Water Act consent decree. The consent decree was issued by a federal court and is overseen by US EPA, Ohio EPA, and ORSCENCO, collectively referred to as the regulators. The consent decree is a binding legal agreement, and it requires significant capital improvements to the MSD system to eliminate or reduce overflows of untreated wastewater. The consent decree is implemented through a Wet Weather Improvement Program we lovingly call the WIP. That requires completion of numerous projects over multiple phases over multiple years. The board is required to submit a schedule of projects for each phase that is as expeditious as practicable. The county must periodically submit another phase that includes, must submit another phase that includes a projects and schedule. And that is what we've been working on and what we're here today to present. So just a little bit more background. The consent decree is not optional. As I mentioned, this is a legally binding agreement. Failure to submit the Phase II B does open MSD up and the ratepayers to financial penalties and a regulator-imposed plan that we believe will be more costly. Just in, as I go through today's presentation, though, you are, I'm going to discuss the approach for the development of the Phase II B that continues to reduce combined sewer overflows while minimizing the financial burden on our community. This 10-year plan is estimated to require rate increases, but as we've heard loud and clear from the board, we have attempted to keep those as low as possible. I think it's important to, before we talk about Phase II B, to show where we've come from. We have been operating now under three phases that are either complete or under completion. And I think it's a great moment to pause and look at the accomplishments that have been done to date. I'm not going to read through all of these, but I do want to highlight that in total, through these efforts, over 8 billion gallons a year of combined sewer overflow reductions have been achieved. And that is through the work of the board, the county, and of course MSD. And again, I just want to pause so you can read through these accomplishments. I think it's a lot to be proud of. So as we develop the Phase II B plan, we did focus on three primary objectives. Obviously, reduce, continue to reduce combined sewer overflows, maintain ratepayer affordability, and maintain the existing MSD system. The plan, again, must be submitted by June 30 of 2024. Once it's submitted, the regulators could accept it as is, or they can negotiate a final plan. Once finalized, though, it is a requirement by the county and MSD to complete the plan. So the Phase II B plan does include several considerations that I think are important to set forth to the board and the public. The first, obviously, we are obligated to comply with the consent decree, and the system must be improved to reduce overflows. Of course, I've already mentioned maintaining MSD's existing assets. MSD is a large and complex system that requires maintenance in addition to the improvements required by the WIP. We sought to balance these needs while minimizing impact on the ratepayers. And given the overall cost of the WIP, it must be completed in phases, again, to help reduce the cost to ratepayers. And we also need to be realistic about the pace of projects and cost estimates. I think we all know the number of significant construction projects that will be undertaken in the region and the state over the coming decade, not including MSD projects. We have two major ones right in our backyard happening about the same time, being the Bren Spence Bridge and the Western Hills Viaduct. This increased demand is expected to impact the Phase IIA projects. So given all of these factors and considerations, cost contingencies and flexibility are built in as a buffer in, for unexpected changes. The current WIP that we're operating under calls for completion of numerous projects and several remote high-rate treatment facilities. But the county, MSD, and the regulators agree to a better, more efficient approach, which envisions three large high-rate treatment facilities at MSD's largest wastewater treatment plants, being the Mill Creek, Little Miami, and Muddy Creek Treatment Plants. High-rate treatment plants, as you can, facilities, as you can see here, they only operate during wet weather, and they supplement the wastewater treatment plant capacity by capturing and treating wastewater flows generated by wet weather. Again, they only operate, for example, during rain when the volume exceeds the treatment plant capacity. These are very large and complex facilities. So we do have one HRT in the proposed Phase II B plan that will be sited at the Little Miami Wastewater Treatment Plant. This facility was chosen because it provides the largest reduction in untreated overflows compared to the other two. So at a high level, the Phase II B is a 10-year plan. Total estimated cost in 2023 is 1.8 billion. We do estimate nearly 1.5 billion, billion with a B, gallons of overflow reduction with, through these efforts. The plan includes two main project bundles focused on the Little Miami and the Mill Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. The Little Miami, as you can see, the primary project's here. The Little Miami Wastewater Treatment Plant project includes the preparation for the high-rate treatment facility, construction of the facility, and the installation of anaerobic digesters and upgrades to the solids processing facility. The board may recall you've received a previous presentation on that particular project. The anaerobic digesters will generate biogas to be produced for onsite energy use. The Mill Creek bundle includes construction of a new pump station that will provide sufficient pumping capacity to meet current needs, as well as support the future high-rate treatment facility, construction of a new dewatering building, and the East Branch, Ohio Interceptor Project, which is a collaborative project with ODOT on the upcoming Bren Spence Bridge project, which, again, the board has received a prior presentation on. In addition to this, there is funding for, of course, asset management, as well as the continued funding of the sewer backup program. That funding of 8 million a year will come out of MSD's operating budget.
On this slide, it says 80 million?
That's over the 10-year period.
Okay, thank you.
So just to double down on the plant locations we're talking about, you can see the three major plants here at the bottom on the Ohio River area, Muddy Creek, Mill Creek, and Little Miami. Again, envision HRTs at all three of those eventually, but for the purposes of Phase II B, the high-rate treatment facility will be at the Little Miami plant along with significant investment at the Mill Creek Treatment Plant, which you can see the service area there in blue. Now, before we get into the costs and potential rate increases associated with the proposed Phase II B, I do think it's important to understand and have a little perspective and history of where we've been with the consent decree, as well as rate increases. As you can see, you can see here, I don't want to read it all to you, but for Phase I, over the first several years, there were average annual increases of approximately 7.9%. And for several years, there were zero rate percent, 0% rate increases. As this board understands, that was due to a large surplus fund balance that we wanted to get spent down prior to implementing any rate increases. So based on the estimated capital cost of 1.8 billion over a 10-year period, it is anticipated, estimated, that that could require an average annual rate increase of 4.5%. I want to stress, this is a projection and an estimate. What the board does now is annually, during the MSD budget process, is review MSD's operating budget, their CIP, debt service coverage, liquidity, to determine whether a rate increase is needed, and if so, how much. That will continue under the next phase of the consent decree. We are also, in this phase of the consent decree, like previous ones, the board is not pre-committing to rate increases. So here's just another visual when you look at rate increases over the past 20 years, as well as, again, projected, estimated for Phase II B. So again, as I've stated, the plan is due June 30 of this year. If it's not submitted on time, the regulators could impose a plan on us. If this happens, and these are only our estimates and our expectations, we would expect to be required to build all three high-rate treatment facilities within a 10-year period. So if you take those potential costs, if you add on additional WIP projects, as well as asset management, our estimation is that that type of a plan, a three-HRT plan, could cost in the ballpark of $3.5 billion. And you can see here, based on our estimates, that would be an estimate average rate increase of almost 9%. So we are doing our best to meet the board's direction, as well as a consent decree, to keep costs as minimal as possible with our plan and get it submitted on time and have strong negotiations so we could avoid this type of plan. So in closing, again, I want to thank the county and MSD teams for developing a proposed Phase II B that remains committed to complying with the consent decree, to minimize rate increases, continue investments in assets, and maintain flexibility to manage unforeseen circumstances. This, the Phase II B provides a significant amount of CSO reduction balanced with concerns for the ratepayers. And again, unfortunately, negotiating a Phase II B plan is not optional. And we want to have a strong negotiation period and also make sure we get this plan submitted on time so we don't have a plan imposed upon us. And again, I want to stress about the rate increases. I can't emphasize it enough that this board and future boards will look every year at the budget to determine if and how much a rate increase is needed. So we are open for public comments through June 6 of 2024 at midnight. We'll take them all the way up to midnight. So we encourage, if there are any comments, you can submit an email to Leslie Hervey. You could mail it to 138 East Court Street, Cincinnati, 45202, or you could also come down to the building and drop off any written public comments. And we will, once we receive those, we will review, respond, and submit the plan prior to June 30. And finally, in the final closing, I would like to thank the board. You've been very patient with us and provided very good guidance and support throughout this process. And most importantly, for ensuring that our consent decree requirements are, we're committed to those and making sure that our ratepayers are not overlooked as we meet this mandatory legal requirement. With that, I'm turning it over to you for any questions. And of course, I will defer the big team here to see if they have anything they want to add or answer any specific questions.
Thank you. She's pointing to the brain trust, the MSD Brain Trust over here on the side of the room. We don't often get everybody in the same room. So thank you all for being here in case we've got questions relevant to your areas of expertise. Before I turn it over to Commissioner Dumas, I do want to say that, thank you, Holly, for framing this in a way that I hope resonates with people. We are under a federal mandate to reduce the combined sewer overflows in this community. We have been under this mandate for how many years?
2004? 2004.
2004, so it's before our times, Commissioner. So, and we've been responding to that mandate in kind over those years. But in the things we're trying to balance here are complying with the federal mandate related to the overflows, making sure we're still doing asset management, which is critically important in an aging system, and then, and the sewer backup program, which is always a high priority for the constituents. But also, I think most importantly, keeping rates as affordable as possible so that those in the community that are paying the rates see a gradual increase as we go instead of something that would be spiking related to the work that we have been mandated to do. So I appreciate you creating the frame for us to try to lay out what exactly we are trying to accomplish and making sure it is as affordable as possible for the ratepayers. to accomplish and making sure it is as affordable as possible for the ratepayers. So I've got, as always for MSD, I've got a whole bunch of questions, but I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Somer Dumas to start us out.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Holly, for the presentation. You really compressed a lot of information, and for those that are watching, it was fairly simple to understand. I think we should not forget about from 2016 to 22, that's six years of no increases. And so now we're looking on 2023, a 3% increase, and we mentioned about possibility of a 4.5% increase, but we know there are many residents who have basement flooding, overland flooding, some who even lack sewer system, and so we're trying to make sure we meet the needs of the most people. And operative work for me is that there's no option. We have to present a plan. I think this is a great plan. Who wants to increase anything for the ratepayers? It's in the forefront of my mind, and I'm sure for Commissioner Drehouse, that as low as we can go would be great, but we want to be realistic. So if we had a 3% and we really needed to go to a 4%, that people can gauge through their budget what they may have to pay and the difference that it would bring to their budget. And so we certainly don't want the regulators, as you were saying, to determine our destiny when they would possibly look at an 8.9% increase. So I thank you so much. We've gone over this so many times, what it's worth going over, because it's going to impact the pockets of all our county residents if we decide, and it's pretty clear that we may need a slight increase. So that's all I had.
Thank you. And I think it goes without saying that this is a federal mandate without any money to follow. So one might call it an unfunded mandate, but you know, the fact of the matter is we've been asked, or rather told, to do something, but they didn't have any money associated with all these projects, and it's billions. So here we are. So a couple of things, just for clarity's sake. So you had talked about the amount of overflow that will be kept out of the system, and I want to remind folks that this is a 10-year plan that we're looking at here. This is Phase 2B. And you said 1.5 billion gallons of water would be kept out of the system?
Of the untreated overflows, yes.
So throughout this 10-year phase? Help us put that in context. How much was removed in previous phases? Do you know?
For the first 20 years, it was almost 8 billion gallons.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure we've got some context around that number. It's a huge number.
And yeah, Diana, feel free to come up. It does, you know, we had the low-hanging fruit with the first handful of years, and now it's harder and harder to get those remaining reductions. You have to work harder to get to them.
Okay. Yeah, would you expound on that a little bit? Yep.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Is that, I mean, that's just a general comment. In the beginning of the consent decree phases, there was, there were projects and there was work that, you could call it low-hanging fruit, but the, getting the overflow reductions, there were some, you know, obvious improvements or improvements that were implemented in the early stages, and as we move forward, you know, continuing to remove overflows from the system does get more complex and more difficult to do, just the nature of the complex system and being able to control those.
Thank you. You might want to stay there, Diana, because I've got a couple kind of more specific questions. So one is related to the sewer backup program. We always allocate, what is it? It's 8 million a year. This is 80 million because it's 10 years, but of the 8 million, and this is the program that we hear a lot about. We've got a lot of folks, and it's, you know, when people have sewer backups in their basement, it's, it's a huge problem and can be somewhat debilitating. And so we want to make sure we have a constant reserve there to accommodate the needs of the program. Can you tell us how much of that was used in, say, last year and the year prior? Are we using all of the 8 million?
We have not. In just the last couple of years, we have not, we've been close to using it all, but we have not needed to come back to the board for more. For example, we are utilizing the full amount that we set aside. So when we, when the board appropriates the 8 million, we really, we look at it in separate buckets, so we need to have an amount set aside for those response activities and the cleaning for the storms that are going to occur throughout the year. We can never predict that fully, but based on past practices. And then we have, you know, other funding of that 8 million that's set aside and designated for the sewer backup prevention program. So that's where individual property owners that qualify for a solution, you know, are eligible for us to go in. We work with the homeowner, design a solution for their property. So that's really most of the, you know, more than 50% of the annual SBU funds go towards that program. And then we also have where we're paying damage claims. So the first is the response. If a property had damages, they are able to file a claim for reimbursement. Those, you know, you have up to two years to do that, so it doesn't all align with what happened that particular year. So that is why it makes it hard for us to predict the funding, but we have not had a need in the last few years to come back to the board, and we're addressing everything that, everything that happens in that year, everything that comes to us in that year as a claim, and all of the eligible properties are being, you know, are in that program, in that prevention program.
Yeah, I just want to assure people, because we get this question all the time, as to whether or not we're funding this program, the answer is yes. We are funding this program adequately, and if we need more money, it will come to this board, and as we've done in the past, we will provide the funding to MSD to respond to the overflows in people's basements. So I just wanted to clarify the point. And I, and thank you for the important information about not only the cleanups, but also the, preventive is a little, not quite accurate, because, you know, these folks have had flooding before, but these are broader projects that are meant to keep the sewer backups from happening in chronic situations, and so that's what part of this is too. And so I think that's, thank you for noting, I think it's important to note. The other thing, because the HRT is the Little Miami, we also have heard quite a bit of conversation about odor control in the lower Pricel area, in the Pricel area. Can you tell us, I just have lost track of the status of the odor control work there? Have we continued to get complaints, or what are we hearing down there?
So for the, for the Mill Creek, not the Little Miami, yeah, lower Pricel, so our Mill Creek facility, which is our largest facility by far, we treat a large amount of the community's wastewater at that plant, but our odor complaints have gone down over the years because of the work that we've done under a variety of projects. There is still a project that is needed, and that is with our, is in this Phase 2, Phase 2B, so that's with our dewatering, so that's part of our solids handling, some improvements that are needed to really address some of the remaining odors. So that project is included in the Phase 2B plan and the Mill Creek bundle. And that, unless there's something else that Ryan would want to add to that, I think that's remaining, really kind of the remaining big piece of, you know, the known sources of odors at the plant.
Right, and I guess the point is that while the big project is the Little Miami, there's still activity at the Mill Creek and other facilities included in this.
Yes, yes. Major work at the Mill Creek facility is included in this bundle, and really that is getting it to a, you know, that work is needed to be able to then construct an HRT in the future.
Okay, great, thank you. Also, I just wanted to highlight, and this might be a Holly question. So Holly, you talked about this 4.5 average for a potential increase to pay for the consent decree projects, the asset management, and, you know, what that means in, under this 10-year plan. And so I note that you, it's a 4.5 average because the board has to vote on this every year, and so there is built-in flexibility in case we see something that we don't anticipate related to the work, maybe the rate of the work, the amount of money that we need to spend in a certain year. And so I wonder, because you mentioned the timing related to other projects in the community, and so I just want you to just maybe highlight this again, that as we as a board, every year have to contemplate the rate increases, and I want to note, I don't know if it was mentioned, that we were flat for a while because we were spending down a reserve. The reserve is now where we need it to be, and so we are trying to do gradual increases that are affordable to the ratepayers but also address the needs. And so that's, that's this moment in time, but there are other things by way of timing that play into this decision that we make. So we've done 3% over the last two years. This average is a little bit higher than that. Talk a little bit more, though, about MSD, and maybe it is a Diana question, the capacity of the utility to perform the work year by year as we go through a 10-year plan, and that, that, you know, could fluctuate one way or the other. And so the built-in flexibility, I think, is an important thing to note here. The 4.5 is an average, but if there were to be a situation where MSD wouldn't have the capacity because of all the other projects going on in the community, that the projects could slow down? I don't know if there's a scenario where they could speed up, but could you just inform us a little bit more on what that average means and what the built-in flexibility means?
Yeah, the 4 and 1/2% is based on the plan being completed within 10 years. And so I'll, of course, let Diana come up and add anything to it, but I would add to your point, the, the board looks at this every year, and whether MSD goes faster or slower, that will be incorporated into the annual discussion. And in addition, maybe there are projects that are not in the consent decree that maybe are urgent matters that need funded, so we'll also bring those forward. So it's not just whether it's in the consent decree, there also could be additional asset management projects down the road that may need funded, so the board will have to contemplate all of that information on an annual basis.
Yes, so in response to the question about, you know, just the capacity of MSD to deliver projects, I think it's, it's fair to say that MSD is confident that we could deliver all of the work and, and more, but that comes at a cost, right? So the more, more work we're doing, the more resources we need, there will be needed resources just in terms of internal staffing, and of course, the, the more construction activity, not only, you know, with the utility, but in the community, could potentially drive costs up. So I think it's more a matter of, you know, to do the work at a faster pace or even at the pace it is, some of those unpredictable things with respect to costs is where, you know, that really calls into question the capacity. So I don't feel as though it's a challenge for us to be able to deliver as much as we could afford to deliver. It's really going to be more about the pressures on the construction industry, our own resources that would require even more costs than we've already included in this plan.
Yeah, no, I think that's, it's fair to say, and I think, and Holly, you've said it over and over again, it's the direction of the board of county commissioners that in some way is driving some of this, because we want to keep the rates as low as possible, yet meet the obligations of the consent decree. And so that's, that's the balance, right? That's what we're trying to work out here. So, okay. I don't have any further questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, question for Diana. We talked about the sewer backup program, and I remember looking at the statistics, and it's the most underutilized program. And I remember saying, is the criteria too strict for people? And I remember you saying, there are certain criteria where people can qualify or not qualify. And I was just wondering if you guys had looked at adjusting any of the criteria, because there's so much sewer backup, and the majority, the percentage did not qualify for that program. So I'm wondering, what have you guys done to look at it a little differently so more people can qualify?
Sure, so I think, yes, and we did have that conversation, I think, perhaps it was back during the budget, I can't, I can't recall. But in terms of the eligibility of, and the sewer backup program in general, it was set up and agreed to as part of the consent decree, so it is part of the court-mandated program that MSD respond and provide services to individuals that are impacted by sewer backups. But the eligibility does tie it back to a, a link or a cause from the public sewer system. And so that's how we qualify individuals, which is as it's set out in the consent decree, because ultimately what we're doing is we're working on private property or we're providing funding to private property owners. So there really isn't an ability to expand eligibility legally without, I think, that's kind of a bigger policy issue than what MSD can do, because the individuals that are not eligible, it's because we've determined through our investigation that the property was impacted not by the public sewer being surcharged or overcapacity, or not by a blockage in the public sewer, but by some other, either private issue or stormwater issue that we don't have the jurisdiction over, so.
So have the numbers gone down at all? I remember looking at the statistics as it relates to the public sewer, and it was their problem, not our, not MSD's problem. And so what, what do the statistics look like now?
So we've had quite, we've already had a few major rain events, I'm sure everyone recalls those in the last month or so, so it's been a wet spring. And we really do continue to see, and we do have a high volume of calls, we had a high volume of calls in early April, and we see the same statistics generally, somewhere around, you know, 10 to 15% of the calls that we receive and properties we investigate are then eligible for the program, and the others are, you know, oftentimes, again, it's a stormwater issue or, or a private property issue, meaning something on their private sewer lateral, lateral. So those are the ones that are not eligible. So I, I don't have the exact numbers with me, I'd be happy to share them at another time, but we do still see generally the same trends, overall the call volume is going up.
Sorry for interrupting you, but 10 to 15% is higher than what it had been, from what I remember, but you can share that with me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Jeff, do you have anything to add?
No, Commissioner, I think the team did a great job of framing this and summing it up, only just to, again, just, first of all, thank the team for, for everything that they've done. As has been mentioned many times, this is a, an unfunded mandate to, to the community, but I think it's, and we've talked about this jointly with our, with our colleagues at the city and MSD, that as we have to spend these dollars to do, to do this project, we need to continually keep in mind the benefits that we're getting from the project in terms of environmental improvement and the ability to remake the infrastructure in this, in this community that's so important to the, to maintaining our quality of life here, but also future, future growth. So I think the board has hit very clearly on the issues associated with the, with the rates, and the, and I think the, the wisdom of the plan that is proposed is, is one that attempts to balance those benefits that we spoke of with a, a level of improvement that the community can afford. The presentation, I thought, laid out very well, the thought that doing more of that program quicker in terms of the additional HRTs would likely not be financially sustainable for, for the community. So the board will have an opportunity to revisit this on an annual basis, and the board has always been amenable to hearing from MSD if there's, if there's needs from an asset management perspective, from an SBU perspective, et cetera. And I think, just thank the board today for, for your consideration of, of the proposal, and we look forward to submitting this and entering into those discussions to finalize the program.
And, you know, we have a little bit of time here to go before the deadline, so I'm grateful that all of you in the room, county, city, have worked together to make sure we meet that deadline, we don't get any penalties related to any kind of delays, because I know this is challenging. I mean, this is, this is always challenging for us. It's one of the hardest decisions I think we make every year is to try to level set these rate increases so that they are affordable and yet meet the demands that we have in front of us. So I really do appreciate, I know it's taken a long time to get here, this is a 10-year plan, and so really, really grateful for the cooperation of all of you to put this in front of us today. So Holly, would you come back up and remind us, how many hearings do we have related to this? When is our next hearing, so that we can proceed?
This is the only public hearing we're having, but we will be taking public comment through June 6th.
Okay. And so when do you anticipate, then, this coming back before the board?
We will share any feedback we receive from the board, but there is not a requirement of the board to actually vote on the submission of this plan. The board will vote on the final negotiated plan with the regulators.
Got you, okay, thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to move that we close the public hearing. I'm sorry? I don't have any public comments. I know, I'm surprised as you are. Is there anyone that would like to comment? I mean, I know, right? No, I don't have any comment cards.
I was just wondering, is there a necessity to close it now, when they're going to be getting public comments up until June the 6th? No? Charlie is looking.
So this session for, you can receive public comments to the deadline that has been set out by Holly there, but as far as this public hearing, we close this.
Not to say that we can't have more conversations about, yeah, what, what we learn through the public comment.
Okay, second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Thank you. All right, thank you all, appreciate it. I know our next item is, on the regular agenda, agenda is MSD-related, but we have five of them, so please come forward. We just can't get enough of MSD.
Fortunately, items 1 through 4 are very similar, and I can summarize them together. They are resolutions to authorize and fund construction of four separate sewer lateral projects for the properties located at 10460, 10480, 10652, and 10490 Mill Road. Each will provide public sewer service to a single-family parcel and facilitate the elimination of the property's existing household sewage treatment systems. elimination of the properties' existing household sewage treatment systems. Each of these was petition initiated, and the owners have waived the public hearing and any objections to the projects. We're requesting appropriation of construction phase funding with this legislation in the amount of $67,000 for House Number 10460, $69,200 for House Number 10480, and $64,000 each for House Numbers 10652 and 10490. Each property will be assessed the applicable portion of the project costs after construction is completed. That amount is anticipated to be $12,000 each. And I can move on to item number five, if you'd like.
That'd be great.
This is our annual final assessments for 2024, which is the last legislative step in the process for our assessment projects. I think we have hit nearly every step on the agenda today with various items. These resolutions will assess the applicable project costs for five projects that completed construction over the last year, three local projects, I'm sorry, three local sewers and two laterals. The 20 parcels benefited by these projects will be assessed $12,000 each. On approval, MSD will send invoices to the owners and can make a full, partial, or no payment over a 30-day period. And any remaining balance will be placed on the property taxes, and again, can be paid over 20 years in 40 semi-annual payments with applicable interest and fees. With that, we can take any questions. Recommend approval.
Any questions, Commissioner?
No questions.
I have no questions either. So I'm going to move that we approve of items one through five.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all being here. All right. Item number six is related to a resolution directing county facilities to fly the rainbow flag at the county in honor of LGBTQ Pride Month in the month of June. So this is the resolution that makes that happen. And then we will, Commissioner, I want to make sure you know this, have our annual flag raising on May 31st at 1:30 for the pride flag. The city is doing their flag raising on the same day at noon, and so ours will be an hour and a half later. So, and at that point, we will present the proclamation. We don't have that in front of us right now. We'll do it at that time. But this resolution is just to make sure that we get the flags up for the month of June. So I, unless there are questions, I'll move to approve.
No questions, just comments that we're trying to recognize everyone, every group, as we did previously, as was mentioned about Asian-American, but we want to not leave any, anyone out. So I'm glad we're doing this.
Thank you. All right. Move to approve item six.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Item seven, my agenda says that we are holding item seven. Commissioner, was it your intent to hold this?
No, I heard it was supposed to be held.
That's what I thought too.
I didn't want it held, but I think it's supposed to be. Is, is anybody's in here?
It is supposed to be held. I think Commissioner Reese's office asked to hold it.
Okay, you're right.
This initiative, Commissioner, was yours. So I wanted to defer to you, but my, as indicated here, I'm happy to either move forward or hold it for our next meeting.
Well, I, I think we can move forward. The resolution is only designating Juneteenth holiday and flag raising. It's not a resolution or, I don't know, understand really why we need to, to hold it.
Okay. All right. In that case, with that, any further comments?
Yeah. Juneteenth hadn't been recognized for, I don't know, this would be our third year, I believe. And Juneteenth is a holiday that the county employees get an opportunity to be off for that day, and it declares when slavery was abolished and it was recognized. And so we started, as I said, three years ago, and we're going to have a ceremony to celebrate it again. So that's all I had.
All right. And, and obviously, if Commissioner Reese would like to comment to this when she's back.
Sure.
We'll, we are happy to, to bring those comments forward again. All right. So I will then make a motion to approve of item number seven.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number eight is county administration.
Thank you, Commissioners. So item number eight relates to the, the operating management and management agreement with the City of Cincinnati for the system known as CLEAR or county-wide law enforcement applied regionally. So back in 1968, the county and the city entered into an operating agreement for the management of a law enforcement information system. In 1982, the voters actually approved a .54 mil levy for the operation of that system, which includes the information system for roughly 50 law enforcement agencies throughout the county, as well as not only the informational systems connecting various crime information systems, but also the hardware associated with mobile data terminals within police vehicles, et cetera. So on today's agenda is item number eight, which enters into a new operating agreement with the City of Cincinnati for the operation of the CLEAR system. It's taken us a little bit of time to revise that agreement, but we're ready to bring it forward today. I believe today with us is Jim Kovak and Hughes Wright from CLEAR. And gentlemen, I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to say specifically today about the, about the agreement, but you've sat through a lot of, a lot of meetings. So if you, if you wanted to take the opportunities to say a little bit about CLEAR, happy to entertain you at this time.
Please come forward. We would love to hear from you. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Kovak. I am the IT manager for RCIC, which is the department underneath the CLEAR. I am a city employee, a city of Cincinnati employee, but we do represent the entire county, providing, as was mentioned, MDTs or MDCs for all the police cars across the county, whether they're city or any of the villages, townships, and Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. We maintain a database of criminal records, law enforcement, anything. And our primary focus is officer safety as well as citizen's safety. So an officer doesn't approach somebody that may be a career criminal, may possibly, and not be prepared. And on the other side, maybe not one and be over-prepared. So this, this contract is, is a replacement of a contract that was signed in 2008. It's been extended two times. And then again, unofficially, I guess it was extended for a two-year period and one, one-year period. And the current contract will, has the opportunity to go, or has, is a five-year contract with the opportunity to extend it two more five-year terms.
Commissioner, any questions?
No, it's so important. It's a necessity for our public safety officers. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Commissioners, I would just note that this is the, the one levy that the, the board has that is a continuous levy. So it's .54 mils. But it, again, it was voted on back in, by tax, by residents and taxpayers back in 1982. But it doesn't change, and it doesn't go back on the ballot unless it is to change. So makes it a little bit easier to apportion the operating agreement associated with it.
All right. Very good. I'm going to make a motion that we approve of item number eight.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. And thanks again for being here. Appreciate it. All right. We're going to move into the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have several items on the consent agenda today. I'll walk through them fairly briefly. Number nine is the auditor statement of financial transactions for April of 2024. Item 10 is a budget adjustment for juvenile court state grants, environmental services, federal grants, and emergency management agency grants, 1.05 million. Item number 11 is a resolution purchasing one 2023 Dodge Charger as a replacement for the sheriff's office, $31,561. Item 12 is an item purchasing four Dodge Durangos as replacements for the sheriff's office, $155,180. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing the award of ITV 109-23 to, to a business solutions company LLC, doing business as AFOX. And the Commissioners, on behalf of the sheriff's office, this is for uniform equipment tailoring services for $2.8 million. Item number 14 is a grant between the Hamilton County Solid Waste District and the Center for Addiction Treatment for Waste Reduction Programming at the, at the Center for Addiction Treatment Facility for $15,000. Several job and family services items. Item number 15 is amendment number two of an original agreement with Justice Works Ohio LLC and JFS for $100,000 for parent education services. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing renewal one and amendment two of a single-source agreement with Step Higher Inc., Nella's Place, for independent living services, $383,500. Item 17 is a resolution authorizing renewal two and amendment two of a single-source agreement with ENA, doing business as NECO, and the Board for Residential Treatment Services, $400,000. Item 18 is a resolution authorizing original single-source agreement with Legacy Residential Homes and the Board for Group Home Services, $485,000. Item number 19 is a resolution authorizing the use of credit cards in the probation department for $8,503. Item number 20 is with the sheriff, is reporting no objection to two liquor permit applications. And item 21 is a request for the authorization to travel at the county's expense for one employee in the engineer's office to Columbus, Ohio, and that is the consent agenda, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Dumas, any questions or comments?
No questions.
All right. I'm going to move that we approve of the consent agenda items nine through 21.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. With nothing further, I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to ORC 121.22G3, Conference with an Attorney for the Public Body Concerning Disputes Involving the Public Body That Are Subject to Pending or Imminent Court Action.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.